Especially our students, Father God, whatever our students are going through as we come to the conclusion of the first semester, I, in the name of Jesus, rebuke any depression and suicidal ideations that may be on their minds, I pray, Father God, you continue to protect them, let them grow stronger and stronger, and let them be our future leaders that we can look back one day and say, "We did the right thing." And I ask, Father God, tonight, that our mindset be on one accord, and let us try to exemplify positive traits as we do things to impact student achievement. This is our prayer, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, in Jesus Christ's holy and righteous name we pray, amen.
All right. Board, at this time, I ask for a motion on the adoption of the agenda. Here's what I continue to review. Motion by Ms. Miller. Thank you, Ms. Johnson, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have, first, on the agenda, we have, we are proud to have South Georgia State College here with us tonight. We have Dr. Page, Vice President of South Georgia State College, I think I got that right, over academic affairs. And then we have Dr. Kit Carson here with us, who is, works with the academic side of the educational programming at South Georgia State College. If y'all want to come up, we have an exciting announcement, that if y'all want to come to the podium and share with us while you're here.
Kit said I should go first. My name's Rod Page, I'm the Vice President for Academic and Student Affairs at the college, and we're very excited to announce, if you have not seen it already, that we signed a memorandum of understanding with the University of North Georgia to deliver an elementary education and special ed, it's combined degree, to our students at South Georgia State College. This is something that we have been looking at for a while because of the demand for teachers and the critical need in this region. It does take a little while to build a program out from the ground up, particularly because of TSC certification, and what this allows us to do is more immediately offer the program because North Georgia would certify the students, but we would teach the program, our faculty would teach it, and they would receive degrees from South Georgia State College. So this is, this, the signing took place in November, early November, and now it's the construction phase of building the program out, and Dr. Carson has been working tirelessly to make this thing happen. And I'm going to let him tell you a little bit about the nuts and bolts of the program and what we expect to happen as we prepare for hopefully Fall '19, begin accepting students.
Good, right, yeah, thanks, Rod. We're pending SACT approval naturally right now, but I think there's, I don't think there's going to be any problem with the SACT approval end of it. It's, our program is kind of unique because it's based on professional development unit, or system, community, professional development community, whereas the school systems are heavily involved in the preparation of our teachers or the students themselves, and they start field placement right from the get-go, right from their junior year. So it's not like they just have their last semester of a four-year program for student teaching. They'll be involved in free planning, they'll be involved with a number of mentor programs they'll, throughout their two years for the four-year program. So in other words, you and I, Coffey School System, and us, South Georgia State College, will be able to actually grow our own students because we're, we'll, we will be training them, we will make sure that they meet our expectations, and that's kind of a, a unique program, not common anywhere else outside of the University of North Georgia. So it's a heavy commitment on the student front, student part, it's a heavy commitment on our part, it's a heavy commitment on the school system's part, but the end result will be a school teacher that can step out of our program and ride into a classroom and not miss a beat. And that's the nuts and bolts of it. Questions?
This is exciting. We've been waiting a long time to have a teacher preparation program here in Coffey County and South Georgia State College, and we're looking forward to your first batch of graduates. I would say we certainly haven't eaten.
We are too.
Yes, sir. Can I put down Carson, tell all of our board meeting to give us updates?
You know, I would happily volunteer.
That's my nephew. I'd be happy to do anything, anything that's required.
Would they legal with me?
You bet.
Thanks.
Any questions?
You'll be getting a Christmas card from Miss Clayton.
Next, on the agenda, we have the COPS Grant Award, and we have a representative here from Wiregrass Technical College to present to us the COPS Grant Award.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dr. Bonnie Kelly, and on behalf of Wiregrass Georgia Technical College and Dr. Tina Anderson, thank you for allowing us to be here this evening to talk about a wonderful grant that you have received. How many of you knew you received one? You received, you received. We received the largest SVPP, which is School Violence Protection Grant in the state of Georgia, and the only grant in the nation that included a college. So, on behalf of our college, thank you so much for allowing us to participate in this proposal. I want to tell you a little bit about how this got started. I'm going to try to keep this under about 10 minutes, and I have someone, when she starts giving me this right here, I know the hush, so I'm going to try to, try to speak quickly. I am the grant writer for Wiregrass College, I've been there for about 27 years, and as of April, we have succeeded in about a $5 million grant award since, since the beginning of this year, and one of the grants that we applied for, of course, was this SVPP grant. We did that because the, I am actually writing grants for our first responders in Ben Hill County, free of charge, because my husband has been in law enforcement for 42 years, and when this grant was offered by the Department of Justice, it was for school violence prevention and protection, and because our campus in Fisher, which I oversee, and the campus in Coffey County have high school students, we felt like we should apply and certainly qualify. The only way to get involved in this grant was if your local sheriff's office and your local sheriff approved us to do this. So we presented to Sheriff Doyle, who happens to be a personal friend of mine and my husband's, they used to work together for many years, and we presented this to him and said, "You know, Wiregrass will write the grant if you will let us be included because of the CCA, which is located on our campus here in Douglas," and he said, "By all means, move forward." He called a meeting together, we had Dr. Lee and several members of your team here, we also had the First Baptist Church School Program, the, the private schools, I think, were, were here, and we put everything together as quickly as possible, I think we had about four and a half weeks to get it, to get it written, and at this point, I want to tell you that without Dr. Lee and without April Thompson, who gave me her actual cell phone number at home, and we worked together on Saturdays, trying to get all of this paperwork, all the quotes in, this could not have been done. So you owe a big thank you to the two of them for, for really, I think he gave April the, the kind of carte blanche to get things done and move forward, and she did an outstanding job, I had to wait on nothing. We, we received a total, and I think you should have a little, little paper here in front of you, it's just kind of a cheat sheet for you, and if anyone out here in the audience wants one, we do have some extras for you. We received a total of $468,537 with a cash match of $156,179 for a total award package of $624,716. Now, the award itself is from the federal government, but the match is a 25% match from all the entities that were included in the grant. Wiregrass was included, we're going to be receiving about $75,000 worth of protection equipment, school violence prevention equipment, we will pay our 25%, you will be receiving, and I'll talk about it in a minute, $405,409 worth of equipment, and you're going to pay $101,353 for it, and that is a remarkable discount. You will be receiving nine cell signal booster systems, you requested that, that is to heighten, and Chan could really feed you a little more information on this, I can, that is to heighten the signal of the school resource officers at the, at the-
Just boost the Verizon cell signal inside our buildings, a lot of the rural areas have very weak cell service, especially inside the building, and this will just pull that in from an antenna and then amplify it throughout the inside of the building.
Right, so when an officer is, if something happens that he is, in the back of the cafeteria needs to use that radio, that booster signal is going to go out fast, you'll get a response quickly. The second thing you will be receiving, that you requested, is $152,917 for a digital mobile radio aux system, which includes, and this is very exciting, is 80 portable radios, and those radios will be put on all of your buses, so that, let's say something happens at the school, you can, you can route your buses to another, through another route, you can route them, tell them not to come to the campus, you can, you can, whatever, you've got a problem on a bus, that bus is stalled out, something is a fight, whatever happens, those bus drivers will have instant access, and so that's, that's a great opportunity there, it's wonderful. And the third item that you're going to be getting is 14 panic button systems, that means that every school in your system will have what they call the panic button, which, again, Chan will be able to describe this better than me, but it literally is a button that administration can push and it goes straight to 911, there's no calling that has to be done, there's, it, it goes to 911, it goes to the sheriff's office, and they respond immediately, so there's no worry about having to get on the phone, if, if a shooter's in the building, they don't have to worry about getting to their cell phone or trying to make a phone call in secret, they simply push that button and, and it's an immediate access. We have 24 months to spend these funds and to implement these projects, right now it's about down to about 20, 20 months. It was awarded in October 1st, but of course, they didn't tell us until about October the 30th. But in that process, we will go through a bid process, the county will actually be the awardee, we're sub-grant, the college and the school system are sub-awardees. What will happen is, for instance, you will get your bids on your signal booster systems, this is a federal grant, so anything over $10,000 has to be bid out. You will go through your bid process, and then, once you get your bids in, you will order and purchase those items, the feds will send the money, minus the 25% match, to the county, and who is, they've already opened an account just for this grant, and then the county will reimburse you your percentage minus that 25%, whatever the feds reimburse, you'll be getting a check for that amount. We, the college is going to be overseeing the funding part of it, just as a, as a, a process to help Mr. Hickers and actually Sheriff Wooton, since he is actually the overseer of this grant. And once this process is completed, we do have an evaluator that will be coming down to assure that we've done everything we said we were going to do, and then we'll do a final report to the feds. The, the process, we hope, is going to be simple, we have never done this before, as far as your system, our system, the sheriff's office, the county, so it's probably going to take us a little bit to get everything kind of ironed out, but it is a wonderful opportunity, and you ought to be very, very proud because we have, we, our college, has received a number of phone calls already, asking how we were included, how did this happen, what can we do to help other people get it, and I'm sure y'all have probably received some of those same phone calls, because it is a wonderful opportunity for your students, and if you've done nothing else, you could provide it as absolute safe measures as much as possible for your students. Now, we'll tell you that your, if your bids come in less than your amount, in other words, let's say your panic button system is, we, we've got a quote for $45,000, let's say they come in at 40, then that's $5,000, we can go back to the feds and say, Coffey County system needs 10 cameras, will you afford, will you add, add back to their list, and as long as it's within the scope of work, they will include that, okay? You also will be receiving, at no expense to you, the sheriff's office did request it, is two, or two 360-degree drop camera systems located at the exterior of the building so that they can monitor when you have holidays and, and closing, the school closings and vacations, and during the summer, so they can monitor the exterior of the building, okay? Do y'all have any questions for me?
The camera, any particular building, or, or you're saying all of them, or just one?
They're, they're around in the vending, I think, areas, and I think this is something Chan and Chris Elrod and Sheriff will probably work on, but it's, I think they, maybe, have y'all had some break-ins or something with exterior vending machines or anything like that?
I think, so it may have been high school and middle school.
Yes, high school and middle school, right, yes. Any other questions? Well, congratulations, y'all have, you just cannot, i- if you're not excited, I'm excited for you, I know that-
There were, what, in the state of Georgia, four systems?
There were five that were funded in the state of Georgia, and Ben, Coffey County got the largest, Ben Hill County, who I also wrote, got the second largest, and we are the only school, college in the entire nation that was included because we have dual-enrolled students, and we thought outside the box, and that's my job, so we certainly appreciate y'all allowing us to be a part of this, and I would encourage you, this would not have been possible if Sheriff Wooton had not allowed us to do this, because it had to come from him, if he said no, it wouldn't have been done.
We had looked, we had looked into it when it was, came out, as, and we talked with some of the agencies, local agencies, and, and it was a federal grant that would require, as you just said, a local law enforcement agency to apply, so, so you're exactly right, we sure appreciate what the Sheriff's Department gives to us.
And he never hesitated, I mean, the minute I contacted him, I said, "For you, it's kudos," but he's also sending 30, I think it's 30 something officers, or maybe, I think on his, his, it's eight, to the nation, to actually the world's premier active shooter training, and they will come back and train your SROs, so it's, it's, it's wonderful, I mean, it's just a golden opportunity.
Well, Bonnie, I would have to say you deserve a lot of thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Chan has known me for a long time, and I love grants, I love to see what they give to us, and on behalf again of Dr. Anderson, thank you so much for allowing us to be a part of this, because your students on our campus are going to be protected as well as ours, so thank y'all so much.
And we love grants. My favorite thing, free money.
Y'all have a good evening.
You too. All right. Minutes, we have the minutes from our previous meeting, we've had a chance to review those. With the consent of the board, we will place this on the consent agenda for the regular monthly meeting immediately following our work session. Next on the agenda is the financial report. We have our December monthly financial report. Any questions about this document? We have our comparison report, that gives us the comparison. Revenues continue to come in, and we're very thankful. The next document gives us a detailed report. And if you think of anything later, if you have any questions, let me know, the last one is our SPOS report. Our monthly revenues, as you can see, compared to last November, we, we were up. December, hopefully be a good month. If there's no questions, then we'll ask that the financial report be approved on the consent Out of state travel, we do have two trips into ROTC. Just go into drill competitions on January. Once again, we will place this on the consent agenda for regular monthly meeting. We have a resolution for the construction that we did over the summer at Coffey High School. This is the work in which we, we installed safety doors at the front of the school, along with some safety cameras and buzzers to buzz in and buzz out, and put in some windows for, for security there at the front office, and put some locking mechanisms on the, on the doors to limit access during the school day, so this is the Phase 1 of renovations at Coffey High School, and just by approving this document tonight, we'll be able to draw down some state funding from the Department of Education, some entitlement funding. Was that the gist of this?
This state, all the services has been paid for, so this is a closing document that we can submit to the A.D.
Our plan is, is to begin the next phase of renovations at Coffey High, this coming summer, we'll continue doing more, because we have that application with the state to draw capital outlay funding for renovations at Coffey High. If it pleases the board, we'll place this on the consent agenda for the monthly meeting. Coffey High Performing Arts Center, we have discussed, the Performing Arts Center at Coffey High, and I've had a chance to, to talk with you individually, and this is going to be a beautiful facility, something special for our county for many, many years. We've not had a facility like this in Coffey County. A place where a band can call home, our choir can call home, our drama program can have a place to perform, we'll be able to have art activities, festivals, productions, concerts at this facility, award ceremonies, it's going to be a-
Four meetings once we're spread.
It's going to be a really nice facility for years to come, and given the nature of a performing arts center, it's very common for those kinds of facilities to be named after individuals who contributed to the education of young people in the community in which that type of facility is built. Various institutions, whether they be schools or university, oftentimes those kinds of buildings are named after somebody or in honor of somebody, so we have discussed naming the Performing Arts Center in memory of Mr. Clayton Matthews. Any discussion?
Board, is there anything you want to offer up on the recommendation there? This, this really, kind of discussion was very, really opportunity, we've had a discussion about the meeting, I know we talked at a retreat, but, I know, I know we've got some input from the-
We will, the regular meeting, yes, sir. And then the auditorium, we named the auditorium in honor of Mr. John M. Mailey, we'll read John M. Mailey Auditorium. So I know that both of those gentlemen contributed greatly to this community and to our school system, so. Any other thoughts on that?
I'm just going to echo what you wanted to say, there's no doubt Mr. Matthews contributed to me personally, but I've made it through high school, so I'm not the only one in that vote, so he certainly, all the children that he was able to be with, and certainly Mr. Mailey in his part, so.
And we will take that up for official action or meeting following this. 2019 board meeting dates, I sent you this document last week for review, didn't receive any negative feedback or suggestions, so I'm assuming everybody's good with these dates.
Is that, is that date in November correct?
Let's go check, November 21. So that Thanksgiving is 28.
Okay.
We'll put the calendar part in.
That's correct.
If it pleases the board, we'll place these board meeting dates on the consent agenda.
Everybody just, fit in with everyone's fun seasons, travel seasons. It's going to be a long week, thank you.
All right, and the next item on the agenda is audience participation. Do we have any audience participation?
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Kenny Erickson, and I have spoken with Mr. Erickson previously, and I called his wife the other day. I will read this statement that we include on our agenda, "While board meetings are public meetings and not meetings of the public, it has long been the policy and practices of this Board of Education to encourage citizens in our county to attend meetings of the Board and to allow citizens to offer their suggestions, comments, and concerns at our schools toward the end of regularly scheduled work sessions that are held prior to each monthly meeting. Of course, our citizens are invited to discuss their concerns with our board members at times other than just when the board is meeting. This is also true of the superintendent who welcomes your comments, input, suggestions, and ways to improve our schools. Persons designed to address the board during a work session should sign the audience participation- Persons designed to address the board during a work session should sign the audience participation list prior to the beginning of such meetings, be recognized by the chair before attempting to address the board, and otherwise follow published guidelines for public participation contained in Board Policy DCBI. If someone has an issue, problem, or concern that can be resolved administratively, he or she should first contact the superintendent or the superintendent's designated in an effort to secure a satisfactory solution prior to seeking to address the board. The board will not hear oral complaints or criticism regarding school personnel during public meetings. In our policy DCBI, it states that individuals will have five minutes to speak. So if you would, let's honor our policy DCBI, and you'll have five minutes to speak.
Yes, sir. My name is Ken Erickson. I'm an Air Force veteran, a decorated veteran. I'm a veteran teacher, and I'm an advocate for all kids. Today, I'm here as a concerned parent. Over the past decade, my son has appeared before the board for numerous awards and recognitions. Unfortunately, today is on a different matter altogether. In 2016, my son took advanced placement classes. These AP classes gave him extra points toward class ranking, but did not require students to take and pass the final AP exams. While discussing this with my son, I told him, what's to stop someone from just taking AP classes for him? He said, Daddy, none of these kids that are in the top 10 ranking would do something like that. In January 2016 of his senior year, he told me that he was in second place. He was also credited with becoming a national AP scholar with distinction in Coffee County. Only a few weeks before graduation, the final numbers came out, and someone that wasn't even in the top 10 ranking over the past four years was now ranked number one. Obviously, we're both very upset. Meanwhile, rumors abounded before, during, and after graduation that the valedictorian had cheated. Students, parents, teachers, et cetera, came up to my wife at various places, grocery stores, such and such, that no one could take so many AP classes at one time, and how they had understood that parents had paid people to take the classes for her, since no one was going to have to take the final exams and show identification. One of my son's teachers told him that there was no way that the new number one ranked student was capable of even taking one AP class and passing it, let alone the many, many classes that were needed to pass all the top 10 ranked students. Sick of hearing the rumors, my son met with the superintendent shortly after graduation and told him what was going on. The superintendent said that he would look into it. From that moment on, neither my son nor anyone in my family or friends were ever contacted by the superintendent on what he found out when he looked into the matter. But these things have a way of coming out over time. This is why I'm here today. We need to set the record straight for our kids and our community concerning cheating at the highest level in our school system. On June 21, 2018, myself, my wife, my daughter, and a key witness met with the superintendent and Ms. Kim Clayton. On that night, the witness attending the meeting with us told the superintendent and Ms. Clayton that they saw a student in the high school media center login to the 2016 valedictorian's Spanish class using the 2016 valedictorian's username and password. This witness asked the student what they were doing, and the student told the witness that they were being paid to take the class for the eventual 2016 valedictorian. In addition, my daughter also told the superintendent and Ms. Clayton that when she was in class this year in 2018 in front of a group of students, the 2016 valedictorian's brother said, quote, "Yeah, everybody knows that the 2016 valedictorian cheated." Of course, he used the actual name. As the students were talking about it, a teacher walked in and told them they didn't need to be talking about that. After these statements were given to the superintendent and Ms. Clayton, I asked that I wanted a full and formal investigation. I asked him to please check logins, speak with AP teachers, and ask his own son and other students what they knew about it. I asked how long it would take. He said, give me a few weeks. A month later, I met with the superintendent again on July 26 and asked him several questions. I asked if he checked the AP logins. These logins would prove whether or not cheating took place. I asked him if he had spoken to AP teachers about the matter. Each time, the response was the same, I cannot talk about an ongoing investigation. He did state, however, that his son had taken an AP calculus test and was happy to get college credit for it so he wouldn't have to take it again in college. So my remark to him was, yeah, they're really tough classes. So why, in the 2016 valedictorian's place, class, would they take all the AP classes that they needed to get credit for and not take the final exam to get college credit? Why, I responded, because they would have to show identifications to take the final test for that class. So here we are, six months after witnesses met with the superintendent and Ms. Clayton in June of 2018. To my knowledge, nothing has been done. No one has been contacted. All of my family and I want is justice, not only for our son, but for all students seeking to achieve the highest level of academic competition in a fair way. So I ask you board members, two questions. Can you prevent future problems by requiring that students take and pass AP classes for class ranking? Secondly, can you investigate these statements that I've made in any other circumstances over the past three school years where students received extra points for class ranking without taking and passing AP classes? Thank you.
What was? Yes, sir. Have you investigated this? Yes, sir. What do you find? Our staff has looked into it within the jurisdiction that we have, and we're satisfied with our findings.
My name is Nathan Erickson. My father, Ken Erickson, just spoke for me. I'm a third-year biology major at the University of Georgia, and I'm an honor graduate at Coffee High's class of 2016. It's been a while since I've been to Coffee High schools, and honestly, I'm okay if I never go back. I would be reluctant to leave my high school memories behind, but somehow I'm constantly reminded of my time there. So today, I'm here to share my experiences of CHS in hopes that future situations like these will have a justified outcome. From a young age, I was pushed to achieve my own personal excellence. At home, my family was always there to support me. My parents motivated me to achieve something or to learn something each and every day. Throughout the course of my 14 years of public education, the atmosphere surrounding my learning experience and my educators shifted. Initially, I was taught to shoot for the moon, and that learning was about the experience and the journey along the way of learning something and feeling smarter. But later on down the road, my flight course was redirected from the moon to a new destination. Graduation, destination, graduation, destination, graduation. I hear it every day over the intercom at high school. So I remember the day I decided to overcome that standard to just be average and to just graduate, like that was the ultimate destination. I wanted everyone around me to know that I was anything but average. By my senior year, I was captain of the varsity swim team with multiple school records and state entries. I'd acquired a 4.0 GPA through 17 honors courses, seven dual enrollment courses, and eight advanced placement courses, crediting me with over three semesters of college credit. Not to mention, I was in close second place for the title of valedictorian. I'd achieved some pretty great things that year, and I'm honored to say I was finally ready to be recognized for all my hard work and dedication. Leading up to graduation, I hear news from the principal concerning sports or finals or prom or whatever. Each day, I listen to the announcements, and not once did I hear an announcement for the swim team. Our announced sports teams proved their updates, and our announced sports teams and their updates proved them to be mediocre. While the swim team, on the other hand, was the reigning region champion with over a dozen athletes that swam on the state level, yet no recognition. So what if my school didn't care about the sport of swimming? Surely, my academics would stand out, right? Getting closer to that fateful day, my classmates and I were shocked by our final honor ranking when we come to realize that one position wasn't filled by anyone in our honors classes or our AP classes or even our dual enrollment classes, who was even previously in the top 10 or our four years being them. And believe me, we all knew each other, and we all kept tabs on who was what ranked. So eventually, word got out, and everyone knew the position that was missing was for valedictorian, and everyone knew who had gotten that number. Speculation started flying, and then a widely known rumor was spread. Oh, yeah, everyone knew the rumor. Faculty, students, even people outside of school somehow would come up to me and ask me about this. I counseled with my classmates, those that had nearly every class with me and those that were also in the top 10, about what should be done. Some didn't care, while others seemed hesitant when the topic was brought up. Even my teachers talked about the rumors in school, in class, in front of other students. They knew the student, and they had their doubts as well. Since nobody took action and nobody was helping me out, I decided to take action on my own and go talk to my counselors about it. Instead of hearing me out and taking action on an issue as controversial as this, I was pushed aside. I was even silenced. One counselor turned the conversation against me and threatened me with my own graduation, saying that if I kept this up, I would not graduate. Nobody was going to do anything. Graduation was closing in, and everyone was turning their heads in hopes of just making it through graduation smoothly. Without the supports, the support of my classmates or my administrators, there wasn't anything left I could do except bite my tongue and wait for it all to be over. Graduation day, I had dreamed of sitting on that stage in a capping gown with the intentions of giving a speech, but I sat on the first chair on the, on the grass closest to the stage. Zoning out the words of my classmates, I hear my principal read the achievements of our class, and he finished with the words, and lastly, we recognized one student who earned the award of AP Scholar with Distinction. That was a, that was my one shot for my name to be called distinctly of those of my classmates. My last shot of recognition at Coffee High School. Within the month, I was sitting down for a meeting with the superintendent personally about the controversy behind the ranking of the honor grads. And for the final time, I was pushed aside before I could speak my mind. I urged the superintendent to listen, and I anxiously, anxiously attempted to leak out the facts in hopes of achieving some action. But I was, I lost, and it was over. Everything I worked for and everything I had achieved at that moment was sealed by the superintendent's last unrehearing words to me. I'll make sure to look into it. With that, I'll leave you all with a question. How can students achieve their personal best and academic success without the support and the respect of their educators, whose sole job is to provide it?
We'll appreciate y'all coming. Thank you for coming, and we will continue on with our meeting. At this time, we will move to an executive session to discuss personnel and to hear a disciplinary tribunal hearing appeal.
This is my board. Any questions? Move to executive session. Second, Mr. Jowers, any discussion? It's still 7:30. I need a motion to move to executive session. Second, any discussion? All in favor? More session, as you say.